Okay, we're live.
Thank you. Welcome to the July 2020 meeting of the Town of Kent Planning Board. I would like all of you to join me in the pledge of allegiance, even though we don't have a flag here. I pledge allegiance. That's even worse than last month. Joe Faraz. Who?
We got a big who's talking there, so if everybody just mutes.
Yeah, you can let anyone on.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Gentlemen, have you read the minutes from last month's meeting? Do you have any questions or comments about it?
No.
No.
Can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
Got the question here.
Please.
Um, I just wanted to remind the planning board if you could say your name, say that you're a planning board member and say that you're alone in the room where you are.
Oh, you're very right. Sorry. Steven, why don't you go first?
My name is Steven. I'm here alone.
I'm Phil Tolmac. I'm the chairman of the planning board and I'm here alone. Giancarlo.
Hello, everybody. My name is Sean Carlo Gattucci. I'm a member of the Kent Planning Board. I am home alone.
Dennis.
I'm Dennis Flores. I'm the vice chairman of the Kent Planning Board. I'm in a room alone.
Simon.
My name is Simon Carrier. I'm a member of the planning board and I'm here on my own.
Charlie.
My name is Charles Sisso. I'm a member of the Kent Planning Board and I'm here alone.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Once again, back to the minutes. Has anybody any questions or comments about it? Can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
A second, please.
No second.
We have to do this one by one. Steven, how do you vote?
Mine.
Giancarlo.
Hi.
Dennis.
Hi.
Simon.
Hi.
Charlie.
Hi.
I vote aye also. It passes. Liz, who's first on the list?
So the first item on the above the line agenda is for Fregosi Marinelli Property Erosion Control Plan Public Hearing.
So we should reopen the public hearing now. Can I get a motion to reopen the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Can I get a second?
Oh, second.
Simon, how do you vote?
Aye.
Giancarlo.
Aye.
Dennis.
Al.
Simon.
Aye.
Charlie.
Aye.
I vote aye. Public meeting is open. Is there anybody in our audience to represent Fregosi Marinelli?
We might need to unmute people.
Hey, Dreis, check on your side.
Hello?
Yeah, we're just can everybody hear us?
Yes, I can.
Yes.
All right, if there's any public comment on Fregosi, please state your name and go ahead. Hello?
Somebody's trying to call in.
What we could do is leave the public comments open and always come back to it if need be.
Sounds like a good idea. We'll leave that open. Who's next, Liz?
Um, the next item on the agenda is New York City DEP Bailey Brook Forest Management Project Erosion Control Timber Harvest Public Hearing.
Can I get a motion to reopen the public hearing?
No move.
Can I get a second?
No second.
Steven, how do you vote?
But I.
Giancarlo, how do you vote?
Aye.
Charlie.
Aye.
Dennis.
Yes.
Simon.
Aye.
I vote aye. Open. Is there anybody in attendance to represent NYC DEP? I see everybody.
That's okay, because we have the sign up for public hearing.
I know.
Oh, that's right, too.
Who is four five two? Three, three?
Is that Dan?
Five, two, three, three, six, eight, three.
Hello.
That's Charlie's telephone number, I think.
Okay.
Do I put that slide up before, guys? Because that's for the public. They're able to call into one of those phone numbers and be a part of our Zoom meeting. So that's why I put that slide on the screen before that that you guys have seen. But nobody's tried to get into our meeting. That is a part of the public comment for what you're asking about so far.
I guess we should hold the public hearing over till next month. Liz?
I guess so. And are you talking about DEP Bailey Brook?
Right. Yes.
Then, yes, I would hold that one over till next month.
All right. Who would like to make a motion to all the public hearing over till next month?
No move.
A second, please.
I'll say.
Okay.
All Steven, how do you vote?
Mine.
Giancarlo, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dennis.
Hi.
Charlie.
Hi.
Who am I living at? I can't see everybody anymore.
Me.
Simon.
Hi.
All right. And I vote aye also.
I just a point of information for everybody, but I know in my area, I had a power outage. We were out of power for a while, so I don't know if it's affecting other people.
Yeah.
Came back about a quarter to seven.
Yeah, ours was out till about six thirty. And Phil, I assume we're gonna just
I'm sorry?
Are we going to keep the Fregosi Marinelli open?
I thought we were waiting.
Yes.
Somebody to show up, but you're right, let's.
They're not gonna show up, but they have Joe Castiglioni has questions.
Okay. Joe, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Mr. Castiglioni.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
How you doing?
Good.
You know, I was just actually interested. My father-in-law is an adjacent property owner to Fregosi Marinelli. I was just interested in learning more about the project. And I didn't have any public comment to offer. I just wanted to and just catch up on where was. That's all.
Well, you can get all the information about the proposal here from the planning board office.
Yeah, and Ms. Patterson at the at the planning book office has been incredibly helpful and I'm tremendously grateful.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for us now for the consultants or us?
No, I don't. I don't think so. As I said, I really feel like I just was trying to learn a little bit about what my father-in-law could expect and was just trying to collect information. That was all.
Well, if at any time you have further questions or whatever, please send them to the planning board and we'll try to help you.
Did Julie give a recap of the project?
Sure. Uh, good evening. Julie Mangorillo, consultant planning board for forty seven years. So the proposal is a single-family home with a drive is part of a shake drive. Um, they have some comments. They're waiting on a they the next time they will be a much clearer picture of what they're but it's most part just as you know, house, septic and dragway.
Yeah, it all seemed pretty straightforward. And as I said, I didn't, I just understand what was going on and what my father-in-law should expect. So thank you so much and thank you for the support. I did actually email the the planning board earlier this week just with some follow-up questions. You know, Ms. Patterson had been incredibly responsive with some documents, but based on the review of some of the memos, it appeared that there may be been some updated versions. And I just wanted to make sure again I was up to speed on what the latest and greatest is. So I really appreciate the support that you guys.
We're waiting to receive revised plan, so hopefully the will be a little more accurate picture still out there.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Okay, well, is this item closed? And because if so, I might just sign off.
Well, you can just hang up. We are gonna close this part of, we're gonna discuss other things now. Okay, you can stay and listen if you want.
Thank you.
It's really exciting from here on in.
Okay, thanks so much.
Very welcome. Can I get a motion to, we should still continue the
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Steven, how do you vote?
Would I?
Giancarlo?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Simon?
Aye.
Charlie? I vote aye.
Aye.
So real Budo or we did real Budo already?
Um, okay, so first I introduce myself. My name is Liz Axelson. I'm a planning consultant to the Town of Kent Planning Board from CPL. And the next item on the agenda is Kent Development Commercial Lot. And I would suggest maybe if we could have the applicant engineer do a presentation.
Please. Jamie?
That is me. Hi, everyone. Jamie LaJunitz from Inside Engineering, serving in landscape architecture. I believe Richard Esposito is also present. I believe he's the nine one four number we were looking at before. But basically, I wanted to go through with you the project. Is there a way we can pull the plans up on screen?
Yeah, so Jamie, if you go on share screen on the bottom of your screen there, and then you can pull up where your files are. Or whatever it is, then you can click share with all of us.
It is not letting me. It says the host disabled participants screen sharing.
All right, stand by one second, sorry.
Thank you.
Andreas, on your end, if you can locate Jamie and then enable screen. All right, Jamie, can you try again?
Yes, I can. Okay. Everyone see my screen?
All right.
All right, yeah, we see it.
Okay, so basically I just wanted to pull up the plan so that we have something in front of us to look at. It also helps with context and whatnot. So the property that is before you, the project that is before you is not new. It's coming back. It's become Kent Development Associates Parcel on North Horse Pound Road. And we have access, a single access off of North Horse Pound into a small parking lot area for a contractor's office and warehouse. We do have a lot line adjustment proposed with the adjacent property, also owned by Kent Development Associates. That parcel was formerly known as Hilltop Estate Subdivision. That is no longer before the board or a valid subdivision. So it is just a lot, but we've deemed it the Hilltop Parcel. But there is a lot line adjustment here to basically to gain additional land for development of this parcel. This parcel, as you can see, we have several wetlands on site. Basically, along the frontage on North Horse Pound is almost the entire frontage. So we literally have one access point to come in. We do also have the other wetland on this side of the property. So we do have a very constrained piece of property with buffers taking buffers and wellens taking up more than half of the site. So we do have stormwater management also proposed along North Horse Pound. Because of the grade and gravity and requirements for stormwater management, it does have to be located towards the lower end of the parcel so that we can gravity in the stormwater and treat that. Let's see, we do have go to, we have several erosion control measures in place as well. And that, I mean, that's basically our project. And I believe the last time we were before the board, there were concerns about the use and basically the use not being permitted in the residential zone here, which we had gotten a variance from the zoning board of appeals to allow for that zone line to be extended to the new property line. So now we are a fully permitted use in the IOC zone for this proposed project. Now, I know before you also is a timber harvest application for the Kent, the Hilltop Parcel that is on this this parcel here, which is a much larger parcel. Just to give you context, this is the North Horse Pound Road parcel where we have your commercial building proposed here. And then the Hilltop Parcel is here. Unfortunately, I don't know the extent of the timber harvest, so I can't speak to that as much yet, but we do look forward to including that in our next submission. Because we believe for some conversations with the consultants is that these two need to be looked at consecutively. And we would like to do that. We have to do that through the secret process. But basically, I mean, we've submitted advanced plans from what we've already provided to the board during the last submission. And we would like to just move forward with the project. We have submitted an application to the DEC and to the health department. So we are well on our way with those applications as well, so that we can vet out any any discrepancies or issues ahead of time. And that is basically the project. And I do, we are a little frustrated that there isn't any review memos to allow us to move forward with the project, given that we did submit on time and and provided additional information as requested as, you know, from the last memo. So there's a little frustration there, but I would like to open that to the board for discussion and seeing if there's any way that we could move forward. You know, still in a timely manner from here on out.
We're sorry if you feel that way. We try to expedite things as much as we can. Anybody wanna?
Yeah, if I could jump in, so
Please.
Um, I know that the planning board has received a couple emails today. Um, just going back several months, at one point, there was discussion of doing a couple projects side by side. And then, and so we communicated, I think, I don't know if Jamie, you were at the meeting. Anyway, he had communicated about whether all the projects would go together or whether projects would be separated out. And the last verbal indication we had months ago was that the timber harvest was being removed. And so when I started looking at this application, I started looking to to the timber harvest file and any emails that I had coming in to see that we had the formal withdrawal that we had asked for in September two thousand nineteen. Since I didn't find it, I put out, you know, a question, got an answer back. Jamie's very responsive. And ultimately, I believe Jamie and the applicant must have had a conversation to weigh their options and have decided to go forward with the commercial site plan and the lot line revision and the timber harvest at the same time, which is fine. That's their choice. Just for my own part, and I think Bruce and Julie shared the same feeling. We were concerned that what we had in front of us that was current was the site plan lot line revision. But we didn't have everything all together and we really wanted some certainty that that's the way we were gonna go. I can tell you from my standpoint, my concern was to start to do the review without everything that I needed and spend a lot of time on it. You know, trying to make comments to frame out what we needed. Now, I can do that, and I suppose Bruce and Julie can also do that. But when we conferred today, we wanted to speak with the board so that they're aware of what's moving forward. And also, I guess I would feel more comfortable if I had a plan set and maybe some updated narrative. Like a coordinated plan set and some updated narrative and an updated EAF that acknowledges that this is all of the projects together, which would be commercial site plan, lot line revision, timber harvesting, erosion control. I'm pretty sure we need a SWIP for this. I'm not certain of that. And there's a wetland permit to just do everything at once. I don't think it would be so difficult to tie that all together and do an updated submittal. So that was my suggestion. Go ahead, Steve.
As I, I fully agree with you that, you know, you need more information, but if comes to you need information from the applicant, I would just expect you guys to send an email out that we need information. I understand it's been a confusing project and it follows from the start because there's been so many changes with it. So I do understand that and making sure everything is there for the speaker and everything else. So I fully agree with you. For the future, if you have any problem, just shoot.
This is Richard Esposito. I'm the principal of Kent Development. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
My last conversation with the tree development company was about ten days ago, and he indicated that Bruce Barber had signed off on it and that Julie had signed off on it. And he was, he was gonna attempt to get a building, a permit to do the logging, which would have precluded us from including him into our application. That did not happen. I believe that the timber company dragged its feet and did not request the building, the permit to do the logging. So that's the reason why that was not included in our original estimate or proposal.
All right. Dick, this is Bruce Barber. Good evening. I think one of the complicating factors, just to add to what Liz just said too, and Jamie, is that presently for the commercial lot, we have basically two applications. Dick, correctly from wrong, but the logging operation anticipated the entire parcel, both the residential and the commercial, all as a one logging operation. And that was the application that you were working on with, I believe, Jordan Heller back last year and early this part of this year. Then the application came in for the commercial building, which apparently is not part of the logging operation. So effectively, we have two different applications for the same commercial property. And I think it's not a complicated thing to reconcile a little bit. I think once we get everything in one spot, we're able to move forward on this and and put some questions together, et cetera.
We, I don't think that we have any issue pulling that all of the information together and submitting, you know, one full complete package. I just, you know, in hindsight, I had, it was frustrating that there wasn't a workshop where we could have vetted this out and I could have submitted the information to you before this meeting and we could have continued moving forward. But now we've lost a month and have to move forward from here. So that's, that I guess is where my frustration is. That if we had had a workshop, we would have been able to get through this and had this conversation at the workshop. And then I could have given you everything that you needed or were looking for for this meeting and then potentially have set a public hearing for the next. But now we're out a month.
Um, I'd like to just chime in. I understand your frustration, Jamie. The board didn't have a reason to have a workshop. And as far as we knew until, until I pressed the question, the logging wasn't going to be added in. And as soon as we knew that the logging was going to be added in, you know, we started discussing it amongst ourselves as quickly as possible to figure out how do we move forward. But the last thing that we had all known when we received this application, I think it was June eighteenth, was that the logging was to be moved. I think that was the only email I had, and I thought, well, gee, is it really gonna be removed? And so that's why I emailed you and everybody to get a specific, and I tried to offer the specific language that would be needed in a withdrawal letter, which I believe kind of prompted this changing the way it did. And I know it's frustrating for for you and the applicant and everybody, but we were trying to dot the i's and cross the t's to move forward on what was submitted. And now what we're trying to do is adjust and see if we can keep moving forward with what your client would like to do. So sorry for your frustration, but I don't think there was any attempt for anybody to delay or have anybody lose a month. You're just asking questions for clarification. So I can see how it could move forward.
We could have delayed it anyway.
We don't try to slow down anybody's applications.
Try to expedite them all.
So, so Jamie, do you feel the best tack is to? Well, what would be the best tack that you would consider? I mean, right now we have a logging operation, application for the entire parcel, residential and commercial. And then we have a additional application for just the commercial piece, which does not involve logging operations. So, you know, how would you feel is the best way to approach this to get this kind of, you know, back back into the chute here?
Um, well, I mean, I would suggest that we submit one full application with everything on it, including all the plans and give you everything in one package. That would be my suggestion. I, you know, the, this commercial lot also includes the, includes both parcels. Both applications include both parcels.
I agree.
So I think if we can, if we get everything pulled together into one complete application and submission package and get this back to you before the meeting. Now, I know the submission deadline Um, now, I know the submission deadline is Thursday of next week. Is there any leniency on, on that? Given that there's a lot to pull together here. I mean, I'll do my very best to get in by Thursday, but it, you know, it's drain thing that.
Keep us, keep us advice as to how you're coming along, Jamie. And if you need an extra day or two, we could probably roll with that.
I mean, is it possible you could get it in by, um, like the twenty first? Uh, which is the Tuesday after the real deadline? Is that, does that give you enough leeway to be able to make a submittal?
Absolutely. I think that will, that will greatly help.
And Bruce and Julie, how are you with that?
Um, that's, that's fine. Vera, could you please tell us when the consultants' meeting is for, um, July?
Um, yeah, just one second here.
The reason I'm asking is it would be great if we can get it a day or so before that meeting.
July twenty first.
Yeah, there you go. Jamie, is that okay?
Um, if I get it before the, the twenty first?
Well, we're gonna meet on the twenty first and we generally discuss the materials that have been submitted to date. Um, so if you can get it even that the afternoon of the twentieth, that would help us out a lot to start the review process.
I will, I will get that into before the twentieth.
And Jamie, if you want, we'll put you on the, would I do a Zoom call for a conference call on the twenty first? We could put you down for that too.
That would be great. So I think then we can, we can vet out any issues or if you have to, guys have any questions, that would, that would greatly assist moving this forward.
Good, okay.
Would it be helpful to send you directly the submission packages?
Absolutely.
Do you really send them?
A, a link and make sure Vera copies.
Yeah, that's okay with me.
So let's just recap. Are we talking, Bruce, are you talking about a submittal on Monday, July twentieth?
Yeah.
If, if we could, that would be perfect because then we can get together, look it over on the twenty first at the consultants' meeting. Jamie can call in and, and Mr. Esposito, whoever would like to uh, further discuss it if they wish with us. And I, I think that would work well, um, to, to move it along.
Add something to the logging application. For the, the log application, I have a memo from April thirty. I still have some items that need to be addressed. One of the main ones is the, the erosion control bond, which is dog getting called for one application. That's not a problem. And then we had asked for, um, an update with the highly superintendent, Richard Hoffman. Uh, so we haven't received that either. So the, and I don't know about Bruce, but as far as I'm concerned, the logging piece is not just ready to go. I mean, it's closed, but it's not signature ready.
Yeah, I'd, I'd have to look, I'd have to look back at my March memo. That's the last one I wrote, I believe, beginning of March. Um, and get back to you. I, I think I was very close to have everything sewn up, but I will look and get back to you.
And I just have to be honest, um, because I wasn't involved in the logging one. I didn't save the emails that had attached information. So Jamie, I don't know if you can send me a link with all the, with the prior logging thing, so I have those to refer to, you know?
I don't have any of the logging information.
Okay, never mind.
We're, we're good, we're, we're in the process of obtaining it, um, to, to submit to you. So once I get it, I
Submit then.
Liz, I can send you some of that.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Just send me the latest Vera, not the earlier ones.
Okay.
Please, thank you. Sorry about that, Jamie.
Don't worry. Okay, um, I, I think that Joseph on our end, do you guys have any further questions?
Does anyone have questions for Jamie? I guess not. You're free to go.
Uh, Richard, did you have anything to add or are you all set?
No, I, no, I'm set. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then we will be submitting shortly. Thank you for your time. Have a great night.
Thank you. We'll try to expedite it for you as much as we can.
Thank you very much.
All right, uh, what's next, Liz?
There we go. So the next item is G A D F L L C.
Okay.
And it's an amended site plan and change of use.
There anyone here?
Yes, Alex Mazada.
Please tell us about your project, Seth.
Um, we purchased ten eighty-eight Route fifty-two in November of nineteen. Um, and we had, um, begun and we've already, um, brought in one new tenant in the building, um, that is a real estate broker and that is Caldwell Banker. We worked with the building inspector and he gave a, a C O right before the COVID this um, occurred. So we had a C O but, and then COVID occurred, but she was able to reopen actually in the last week or so. Um, so what we're really talking to you about tonight is in the rear of the building is a two-bedroom apartment um, that we would like to use again and rent again as a two-bedroom apartment. Um, it was used as a two-bedroom apartment in the past. We're actually not requesting any changes the way the building has been working for forty-something years. It's always been professional in the front and an apartment use in the back. But, uh, it was just recommended that, uh, you know, we come before the, the, the board amended site plan because, um, I don't think the board seems to say for this property probably in thirty, forty years. And we just wanted also an approval on the apartment to be used as in a, a permitted extra use per the, um, the town code. So that's really a summary of why I'm here before tonight.
Can I go?
Thank you.
So, um, Alex, I'm, I'm glad to hear what you said. Um, because when I received these materials, I, you know, just conferred with Vera. She seems to know everything that's going on.
Okay.
And, um, I thought it was just a sign application. So I was a little, when I read the application, I thought, I didn't think this was a change of use. And I looked at the floor layout and I looked at the tax card and it looked like it already has office and an apartment. So I was stumped about why it would need site plan approval if these already exist in the building.
Okay.
Um, so I mean, I'd like to talk to, um, Bill Walters, but as, from what I can tell, and maybe I, maybe we need to talk offline and I need to talk to Bill Walters, but it looks like the office and the apartment uses already exist. I'm not sure what, if anything, Bill Walters thought was changing. And so possibly this is just a sign approval. But I can't really guide the board through whether there's a change of use tonight. Um, I have read enough of the sign stuff to have an idea to ask questions about the signs. But he didn't have enough information to put together like a small approval resolution. So let me just, is it okay if, does the planning board mind if I ask questions? And we'll see what we can do tonight. Is that all right, Phil?
Why not?
Okay.
You have ten seconds.
Oh, okay. Then I'm not gonna make it.
No, I'm just joking.
Meeting, okay. So, um, Caldwell Banker's already in the building. Is that correct?
That is correct. They, uh, submitted, uh, they received the certificate of occupancy from the, from the building department in March.
Okay, okay. And then when I'm looking at the signs that were presented, there's another one for paroty chiropractic, but I thought that was across the street.
Yeah, that was just, uh, uh, an example of what our sign right across the street would look like.
Um, okay.
Very simple. That's all that, that was the only purpose of that.
Okay, great. Um, and then, um, let's see. So when I looked at the tax card, I got the impression there was an apartment um, and two offices or there was office and apartment.
Okay.
Um, are there two offices or one?
Um, I believe in the past, they had separated them as two, but Caldwell Banker took both of the offices. So, uh, they have, they have combined the offices. So let's just call it one right now. That's, they, they occupy the one office.
It's one large office.
Correct. Approximately fifteen hundred square feet.
Okay.
And that would be the area of the building that faces Route fifty-two.
Right, and the apartments in the back.
In the rear of it, facing the more residential area.
Okay. Um, it looks like your square footage on the signs is fine. Um, what I'm gonna try to do is get the board to the point in a few moments where they could give you a sign approval. So that you can at least move forward with that. Um, are you gonna have any lighting? Uh, like, are you gonna have flood lamps pointing down to the sign or is it just unlit?
Um, I think at the mo, no, it's unlit and I don't think we intend to. Um, do we have the ability to do so or would that require further approval?
Um, well, um, yeah, you could have the ability. What we typically recommend is, um, lights mounted above the sign pointing down.
Okay.
So external, like, little lights pointing onto the sign.
All right, so we want the lights pointing down. We don't like them pointing up?
No.
From below, okay.
Pointing up at revolution.
Okay.
And it looks like
Okay, got it.
It's a wood sign? Or something like that?
So in the event we do decide to put the lighting and if we will put them, uh, on the top facing down, do we need to come back to you or is that just permitted and?
Well, I would incorporate that into the verbiage that I'm gonna see if the board is willing to approve tonight for the signs.
Yeah, you'd rather, which says that there is lighting and then you can add lighting later. You still have to go for a permit for lighting, but that's a county permit because it's electrical.
Did we just lose Alex? There he is, okay.
Back.
So if, do you, if, if you know that you want lighting now, we could put that in to the resolution? Um, or you could just wait and come back?
Um, why don't we put it in that I will place lighting as per your code? Then if I elect to do it, that's okay too.
Okay. Um, and then the signs, what are they made of?
Um, I think there's just, um, they're, they're very thin. They're just aluminum signs.
Okay.
So they're not, uh, so they're kind of thin aluminum.
Okay.
And we could go.
What's the color combination? It looks like it's black with gold. What is, I couldn't really tell from the illustration.
Actually, um, it's actually blue. It's a blue sign with white lettering.
Okay, excellent. Okay. All right, um, does the board have any questions at all? About the signs? Did you see the materials?
Is there any kind of a, is there any kind of a drawing with the sign? Is there?
Yeah, I, I provided that. It's part of my submittals.
So, let's have a quick question. Are you going to need to do any kind of site work, any excavation? Anything at all that would disturb the site at all? Other than digging some holes?
Uh, for, other than for the sign, the, the site will remain untouched. I'm gonna use it exactly as is. I'm just trimming some bushes and stuff just to clean things up. But other than that, uh, no, the answer is no.
So, so Liz and Julie, is, is this indeed a change of use and would that then necessitate a referral to the health department for, for the septic system?
Um, what I'd like to do tonight is to, um, speak to Bill Walters about whether there's a change of use. So if you and Julie don't mind, I'd like to put that aside and maybe come back to it at a later meeting. Cause I, I don't feel like I have all the facts that I need.
I don't know how you feel, but.
Can I just add a little bit?
Please.
But Liz, I don't know if you remember, but I think we discussed this at the last in-person consultant's meeting. We went around and around about the, um, the apartment. And I think one of the things that you had brought up was this designated parking space that we needed for the residential. So. I don't know if this is ringing any bells.
I could speak to that. I could answer that.
Okay.
There is, there is a second driveway entrance, um, just for the residential. Um, so, um, in the rear of the building, you actually drive up to a garage and they would not really need to use the commercial parking area, um, at all. So they kind of got it already carved out for them. It's pre-existing.
Do you remember coming in and meeting with us in, I don't know when that was, January or February?
Are you asking me that?
Yes.
We, our only conversation occurred, um, in, I believe it was the May conference call. And at that time, um, we had discussed these topics. It was recommended I come with a, uh, a, a new site plan, which I've delivered to you and signage information, which I've delivered. And then it was just merely a matter of discussion on the accessory use uh, of the permitted accessory use of the apartment. And I, my impression is that was really what's, what's the discussion point for tonight? Um, is, um, is whether that I could proceed with that. It had been used that way for about thirty or forty years. I'm really not changing the use of that building at all, but no one's come to in a long time. So it was just your recommendation that I just come back to the board and refresh. So that's really the purpose.
Yep, yeah.
What are you thinking, Julie?
I think, uh, Liz has spoken with Bill Walters about this already after that May meeting. They might wanna look for that.
Yeah, um, I guess what happened is between the May meeting and what I received today and what I found online um, made me question why this would need site plan approval. And that's why I wanted to.
Okay.
Because, because if it does need site plan approval, um, I would like to talk to Bill just to get some clarity on things between the way it's written up, not questioning any, anybody's provision of information, but um, I just got looking at it and thinking, let me make sure this really is a change of use. And I didn't feel that I could issue comments on it or spend any time on it until I had a better sense of that. And I, I agree that we did have that discussion. Um, but this presents a different picture and I also, if it is a change of use and we do need to go forward for site plan, then I would have to write a review asking for some more information.
There's no way to do.
There's no what?
No way this is a change of use.
I'm sorry?
I couldn't hear what it broke up. But this, no change of use, it's not changing any use.
Yeah, it's the same it's been for forty years.
So if you're, what are you doing with your septic system or, or? I heard something about that.
I'm sorry?
Doing something with your septic system, sir?
No, 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 nothing has to be done to the septic. I spoke to the health department. I spoke to Leslie Anne Pirano. She said since the commercial use is not any different, um, we're not, we're not going to a restaurant for high water use as a chiropractor. It's gonna be real estate brokers. There's no ex, extra water demand on that. And, uh, so she said that's not governed by her because it's, uh, less than twenty-five people in the building. There's really no septic issue at, um, at bay here, yeah. It really isn't. And I guess, let me just make this point as well. I thought I could have probably proceeded putting an office in as it was in the past and renting the apartment again as it wasn't. That's with no change of use, just doing exactly what we did before. Bill Walters thought so, well, but he's like, you should always just Bill Walters thought so, well, but he's like, you should always just play it safe, let's talk to the planning board and see what they think. So obviously, I had no issue doing that. Um, but it seemed like we did that out of an abundance of caution, and and now we are here tonight and. You know, I feel like there's some confusion and and.
You should have, you should have never came before us, you're saying.
Oh, I didn't want to say. You said it.
Well, let let me tell.
Of course, of course, yeah.
My, the issue that I have is that um. What's on the tax card may or may not be current, it says there's two thousand square feet of external apartment. And six hundred and seventy-six feet of walk-up office. But the floor layout shows something different. And there's real estate information online that gives the impression that it's mostly office with the option of having an apartment. So I I looked at the floor layout. And the floor layout doesn't happen to be consistent with the tax record. Um, but I don't, you know. I I don't know if this is representing what's existing or what's proposed.
And what's in the tax information is not gospel.
What?
Not gospel, that what's in the tax information is if it.
I know that.
Yeah. Through that apart. It has to go back to the building department.
The pre-app meeting that we had was substantially based on whatever I could find online, and the tax parcel information was that. And the impression I had was that there was gonna be. A different um, complement of office and a smaller amount of apartment. And then it seemed like a change of use based on the tax information and when we had the discussion. So I guess my conclusion is, I'm sorry to have put you through what may seem like a goose chase, but I'd rather not. Uh, now that I have more information, I'd rather not. Uh, do a site plan review unless it's absolutely needed, which is why I'd like to check my work by speaking with Bill Walters.
And and that's, that's fine, it could be that after you speak with Bill Walters tomorrow, you both agree there is no change of use, and I could proceed without. Coming before you again, correct?
Correct.
This is my one issue though. Um, I have um, a tenant who wishes to rent that apartment. They've signed a lease with me contingent upon regulatory approvals. Um, they have school-aged children. And, you know, they're looking to occupy soon because they need to get their school kids enrolled in the school. Um, potentially another month, um, you know, they need to provide notice to another, their current landlord. So I was hoping that today I at least would be able to leave with, I could proceed and and execute that lease and. Allow these people to to occupy. Um, even if additional site plan requirements were determined to be necessary, but at a minimum, just I'll. Answer me as to whether or not this will continue to be considered a permitted accessory use as it had been in the past. If you could provide me with that answer, that would be a big help to me, because at least I can move forward with. With these people who want to move out of Queens because of COVID, and they're dying to get out of there, and you know. So, can I, can I get that answer from the board?
Oh, that's all building department questions, because legally, if one's a building department, it doesn't have any objections, and the building's not condemned, there's not issues with it, it's got certificates of occupancy. You can do whatever you want.
Yeah, that, I I'm cool with that too, if that's what Bill says to me tomorrow, then.
I guess my que- I don't remember Julie and Bruce, whether Bruce was on that call, I mean Julie and Bruce, whether Bill was on that call.
He was.
He was.
He was. And again, he was being deferential, of course, uh, he wanted to make sure that if there was some site plan issue there, that that we didn't miss it.
Um, I mean, I can't make a decision for the board, let me say this. Um, based on what I have, if site plan was needed, we couldn't grant it tonight without holding hearing. Um, I I can definitely encourage the board to grant sign plan approval for the sign. And then talk to Bill Walters. And if Bill Walters says, if between Bill Walters and I discussing this, he thinks it still needs site plan approval, then I would let you know right away what you would need. To submit to get on the next meeting.
Okay.
So Liz, I can move forward with the sign when we um, refer them to the building department.
Well, he- here's another thing, um, and this is a little bit of a stretch. Um, wow. No, usually we have uh, some kind of an EAF. So I'm gonna walk the board through this, we we didn't have a short EAF, which is all we would have needed, and the thing is. That this is a type-two action because they're not disturbing anything, so technically, uh, seeker isn't required. Um, the one issue that would have to happen is, I believe we would need to do a referral if the site plan approval required. So one thing. That we could kind of go out on a limb to do to set this up for next month, just in case. Would be to um, have the planning board vote to set a public hearing. On the site plan. And vote to um, do a referral on the site plan. In the event that we find site plan is required, after my consultation with Bill Walters.
I I disagree with that, but I remember.
Say that again, Steve.
I disagree with that, because I don't think it's, I don't think we should even go through them.
All right, does the rest of the board feel that this isn't a change of use?
I don't feel that it's a change of use, I definitely think we should approve the sign, and you guys should have a conversation tomorrow. And then just take it from there, roll the dice, I say. If we need to, maybe we could still get the guy, people moved in and, I don't know. We need to talk to Bill, really.
I know, but the thing is, if if, if it, okay. All right.
I mean, does it hurt, does it hurt to do it, um, to set the public meeting, and there's no harm in that, it's just like, if you want to put lights up, if you don't need it, you don't need it.
It's, you know what, it's kind of a stretch. Let's just, let me talk to Bill, let's let's see if the board is ready to do the sign approval. And uh, I'll just have to get back to um, Alex and uh, about what I find out from Bill.
Liz, if Liz, I think we should just do the sign and just, you talk to Bill tomorrow.
That seems to be the consensus.
Well, Liz, I think, I think that what you're trying to do is is cover your bases here, and it makes sense to me. So when could the public hearing be scheduled? Let's say Bill Walters on the very slim chance, but let's say he does say no, it is a change of use. What would be the latest state public hearing can be scheduled for August, if it's not gonna be scheduled for this evening?
Well, I mean, if. You need ten days.
To do it now.
You'd have to vote, the board would have to vote tonight to hold it.
Yeah, we have to vote on it.
That, that's my point.
That was what I was talking about before. It's kind of um, odd to do, we do have an application in front of us, but if we set the hearing and do the referral. Vote to do the referral, and then I find out from Bill Walters that it isn't a change of use, well then. Those things won't need to go forward, but at least the board will have voted, and those things could happen in August, in the event there is a change of use.
That, that makes, Alex, I think that makes a lot of sense, because what Liz is saying, I think, is. Well, I got. Schedule the public hearing, and if it's needed, schedule, if you don't need it, it gets taken up the agenda, you you're on your way.
Listen, uh, there's no downside risk to me that you guys vote on this tonight, I'm hoping I don't see it.
Yeah, the only reason I, I really am against it is because it burns towns' resources, it has to do with getting everything set for a public hearing. It's not like this doesn't cost the town money.
Okay.
Rather not cost the town money that's not needed. Any applicant too.
And then it's also bringing the attention of people too, correct?
But hold on, you're talk, hold on, sorry, Liz, you're gonna talk to Bill tomorrow, so if we say vote tentatively. On the public hearing, you would know tomorrow, so then we could, you could cancel it right there, and then something is done, correct?
Right, and the notices, and again, correct me if I'm wrong here, Vera, a notice wouldn't go out until ten days before, right?
Correct.
It would go out, well, let's just, to be safe, say it would go out two weeks before August thirteenth.
Okay, so. That's what I'm saying, so. If you come along tomorrow and Bill says this is not a change of use, we can cancel it right away, and there is no loss of money to the town or nothing proceeding. We just cancel it, and if we find out tomorrow from Bill that we do need it, then we need it. Is that when I'm here?
Is it just me disappearing or all of you?
We can hear you.
All right. Do you hear this? Liz, did you, do you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, sorry.
No, I'm just listening.
Oh, right, I'm just saying.
So there, there's really no downside if we set up the public hearing for next month, we can always cancel it in the next.
As long as you plan, I can't.
We can cancel it tomorrow is what we're saying, and we don't need to proceed with it if Bill says we don't need to go that way. And as you said, ten days before the next meeting is when they're sent out, so as long as we know before that ten days goes on.
Yeah.
And it won't cost the town anything.
Then, I'm I'm for it then.
Sorry, this isn't a clear case, I just feel like if, you know, they don't need site plan approval, why put them through it, but if they do, let's get it. So, um, the motion would be to, um. What?
Send a motion to. Approve the sign for the public hearing.
And also to make a referral.
And and refer the building department.
And if I can just throw in one thing, that the signs um. That the sign approval would allow for um, external lighting to be mounted on top of the sign.
It'll allow, okay, it'll allow for external lighting mounted on top of the blue with light.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Stephen, how do you vote?
I.
Charlie?
I.
Jan Carlo?
Hi.
Dennis?
Hi.
Simon?
Hi.
And I vote I. Passes. Uh, Alex, do you have other questions for us?
No, I think we'll have everything cleared up tomorrow, it sounds like, so.
I hope so.
I'll leave Bill a voicemail tonight and hope to speak to him tomorrow.
Okay, great, thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Alex.
Good luck.
Take care.
What's next, Liz?
Okay, so the next thing is the sun property, that's either Bruce or Julie, it's erosion control plan.
Is anyone here to speak about sun?
Yep, my name's Vinnie Leto, I'm with Westchester Modular Homes, representing the the homeowner. Also with, uh, with me is Anthony Bissari, the engineer that uh, drew up the site plan.
Wanna give us a brief rundown of your projects?
Yeah, it's a uh, residential, single-family house. Um, eh, we got the letter that was sent out this after, or this morning, actually. So we reviewed that, um, some of the questions that uh, were asked have already been addressed, it does have board health approval. Um, you know, and as one of the notes said, there was a a property right next door that was recently purchased by the same owner. Um, so there may be some questions there, uh, but it's just a single-family residential home that a customer of ours is is looking to move into.
Great, thank you. Uh, Julie? Liz, Bruce?
I'll, I'll start.
Good, Julie.
So in, in my review, uh, during our our consultant's meeting, we left months ago. Uh, Mr. He purchased the lot door, and both lots are undersized for the R E zoning. So under, the the lot would be uh, automatically merged. So the the lot where he's planning the house in the septic is really quite steep, and Westwood Drive uh, is subject to a lot of flooding and erosion during rain events. So, uh, my first question is, if if we're gonna merge the parcels, which he should. Uh, I would strongly recommend that he review the other lot and see if there's a better spot to site the house in the septic that's not. So hopefully to minimize impacts to Westwood Drive and any downhill neighbors.
I I believe he's already uh, thought of that, because I believe there was an easement going through that property that he now purchased. In order to get to another, uh, there was a garage or something on the way back. Um, so he he, he really had no intention on moving the the house or the, the septic's already board of health approved, it's already been uh, through the. Health department, and and it's actually just been re-approved. Um, the the lot itself, uh, as you know, obviously is a, a pretty, it's an existing lot that's non-conforming, uh, and he does have. A variance for the single lot, um, which I would assume, I'm assuming that it would carry over now that both lots are. Are combined, if anything, it's making the, yeah, the non-conformance uh, more, um, you know, palatable, it's it's more conforming than it was. Uh, and it's essentially, it was a area variance, and the area of this property got larger, so. Um, but I mean, as for the the steepness, if it, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe uh, the septic wouldn't be allowed if it was over a certain grade. Um, period from the health department.
Correct. So if if he's not interested in in moving the house, then um, we're going to have to come up with some mitigation for any increase. In runoff, the stormwater runoff, to make not, um, increasing the runoff to the road and any downhill neighbors. And that's something that you guys are going to have to investigate, you know, ways to to keep the runoff from, you know, the roof and then driveway.
And could that, could that be used, uh, simply done by swale, or is there some sort of a mitigate, like, you know, rain guarding, what exactly is it that you usually ask for or recommend?
Uh, that, your design, I mean, uh, different people, they've done, you know, gardens, prep, infiltration, and you know, all different methods. But some, to uh, to prevent the the issues on Westwood Drive from being exacerbated.
So you're just looking to slow the water down from getting onto the the road prior to it moving, you know, removing from the roof?
Right, right. And then, because it's more than than five thousand square feet, you have to go through the county road control process, to see general permit process. So most of the the comment memo is just the various um, information requirements for both the town and the D C to go through the, you know, the permit process.
Okay.
And then uh. There was also, and then also questions about the um, the other parcel and the easement, benefits from the easement, and will they continue to benefit from the easement, so.
And I would have to ask the uh, the owner and his attorney on that, I'm not sure.
And then I didn't see uh. A complete application form, there were some of the affidavits, but not the form itself, I don't know if that got lost somewhere. Um, but that will need that.
I I believe it was also emailed to you, but I'll I'll double check.
Yeah, there were some of affidavits, but not the actual application form, and the application form requires a a copy of the deed. And um, your certifications for the engineer.
Okay.
Julie, that's it, you good?
That's it.
Alrighty, my turn. Um, so this is the first review of this application, and as the board commonly knows, um. There oftentimes is a a few comments and odds and ends that needs to be addressed. Um, so I'll just go through this briefly, uh, this is an application struck a single-family residence with a deck, a driveway. Parking area and a well and septic system, the parcel size presently is. parking area and a well and septic system, the parcel size presently is about three-quarters of an acre, located in an R E zoning. Uh, it's situated on the northerly side of Westwood Road, and the access presently is to an existing gravel drive easement. It will require a steep slope and erosion sediment control permit, as Julie alluded to, and a wetland permit is to be determined, I'll go out and do a site inspection and get back to the board if that is, was not needed. Um, the APK has provided a bulk zoning table, uh, confirmation with the building inspectors required regarding the zoning, it's a type-two action under C curve. Um, wetlands, as I indicated, will be checked with respect to town jurisdiction, there is a D E C, uh, check zone on what appears to be part of the property, wetland check zone. So, they will, the APK will need to get further information from the state. Um, the APK has indicated very few trees to be cut on the property, um, this is in a recovery zone as per use and fish and wildlife, will need a note on the plans indicating unless a variance is obtained, uh, tree cutting must be limited to between November first and March thirty-first of the following year. Uh, as Julie indicated, I did not see a steep slope map of fifteen to twenty-five percent, um, or in excess of zero, or zero to fifteen percent. Um, it does have Charlton Loam and Charlton Chadfield Complex, both of which are very stony and very rocky. Um, I don't know, um, if it's going to be need for any blasting or any rock chipping out there, but I'll have a look and see what we have. Um, land disturbance is calculated presently at about a half an acre, we would like to see cut and fill calculations. Um, the APK does not provide any floodplain information or any cultural resource information, it does, uh, situate in a New York State D E C area of potential rare plants and rare animals, um, so further information D E C is required and well and septic system approvals from the health department are also needed. Um, as Julie said, we just need a complete application, um, and again, I apologize with all these PDFs coming in, it's very possible that some of this stuff has been submitted and it just hasn't been able to be seen. Um, copy the architectural plans, which are the elevations and the floor plans, property survey, copy of the deed, steep slope map, um, copy of the driveway easement and any maintenance agreement that presently is in existence. Uh, plans need be signed and sealed by a licensed design professional, Julie mentioned the stormwater, some site distances, limited disturbance line and a couple of changes or amendments to the E A F, one of the things the board does do also in the lake community Sagamore being no exception, it will refer the application to the, uh, board at Sagamore for review and comment. Um, so that's something the APK should look into, if the Sagamore Board is requesting that information. Tiffany, the planning board will honor that request and materials we sent to them, and that's where we are right now.
Thank you, Bruce. Liz? You have anything to add? Nope. Uh, gentlemen, you have any questions?
Tony, did you have anything?
Nate, no.
No. Liz, do we have any action to take here?
No.
No. No, I, I think, I think Mr. Chairman, uh, to give the applicant an opportunity to respond, uh, perhaps Julie wants to come out on the site visit to check the road conditions and driveway as well. Um, and, uh, get this back on the agenda for next month and hopefully we'll, we'll see some, some real good progress made.
Sounds good, Bruce.
So what's our next step, then, what would we need to do in order to make sure that we're on the next agenda?
You have to respond to all these requests and submit them early enough so that we can go over them.
Okay, and is there a deadline for that?
The twentieth. Twentieth, Vera, or is it before that?
Let me see here a second. Um, it is the sixteenth, but if they get hung up, we could probably give them till the twentieth too.
Okay.
Is the sixteenth.
Do you have any other questions for us? Anthony? Vinnie? No?
No.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, folks.
What's next, Liz?
Phil, we're below the line, um, Alexander Offmer property, that's.
No, you have, you have an enunciate, the bond.
Yeah.
Alright, alright.
Sorry.
Right, we have some bonds for them, right?
Yep.
So, an enunciate has come above the line, this is one that was formerly the Belair Jones that was, uh, Kentview Drive. So, since, so, December or so, finally paved. So, uh, Vera has the, the paperwork, I issued a little memo that just said this was the same bond acquired for the Belair Jones and the plans are the same, um, so if the board would be so kind as to end it for approval to the town board.
Questions, anybody? Bruce, Liz, did you have anything to add?
Nothing.
Okay, uh, can I get a motion to, uh, ask, to accept a nerogion control bond for twelve thousand seven hundred ninety-eight dollars? And the planting bond for twenty-seven hundred dollars? For the, the town board?
I'll make that motion.
And a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay. Dennis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Simon?
Aye.
Jan Carlo?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Recovered, Julie?
Yeah, and then, uh, another item for the same project for Nunziata is the health department went out and did an inspection and they were unhappy with the slope that was flowing on to the septic field, so they've requested a swale, uh, cutoff swale along the top of the septic field to divert some of the runoff around the septic field. So this wasn't originally part of the approved erosion control plans, so we just received the drawings today, so I haven't done a real thorough look at them, but it seems like it should be okay, I want to go out and take a look and really the term factor is where the swale is directed to, so Jack Correll, the engineer, has it tied into some of the other site drainage where it will then discharge at the back of the property. But this property is, is quite steep and we want to make sure there's no negative impacts to the downhill neighbor. So, um, I don't know that, that this change will be significant enough to require an amended approval if, just based on my verbal description, you're okay if I just do my inspection, go through with it as a field change instead of coming back to the board and another. Um, but, you know, the health department required it, and I think as long as the, you know, the, the builder's willing to make changes where it's going to discharge, then I think it, it should be fine.
Gentlemen, do any of you have any problem giving Julie this leeway?
I'm okay.
I don't, do we have to vote on this, Liz?
I don't, I don't think you would need to vote on it, just.
Then please do it.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, you say we're below the line now, Liz?
I think so, unless I'm wrong, Nunziata moved up, right, so.
Right.
So Bruce and Julie chime in, the next one I see is Alexander Offmer.
So that one, the, the drawings were signed, right, Phil, you signed the drawings for?
Yes, I did.
Offmer House, so that one can come off the agenda now.
Uh, Real Butto?
Real Butto, they've also provided their bond, so I believe that's going to go to town board. In, uh, uh, turn of events, the laborer has submitted documentation to town board. I don't know if anybody saw the email.
Yes.
So, so I'm not quite sure where we go from here, but I do believe, um, uh, I don't know whether the, the town board attorney or the planning board attorney will have to get involved on how to address that.
Thank you.
Um, Gold Fine Rin?
That was, um, a change in the driveway, I haven't heard if they paved it or not yet, but that, that should be just on.
And, and the last, last minute I got sent out, we have a look at the plantings in the basins, um, and I did so, the it actually turned out reasonably well, there were some invasives in there that I instructed the APK to pull out or reseed, um, they should be in good shape on that. But the driveway, at that time Julie and I were discussing it, was, was not paved.
Thank you, Bruce. Anything else on this?
Ryder? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so Ryder, they're requesting the bond release, but we haven't done final stabilization inspection, as you know, the code, uh, says the bond has to be held two years, although the planning board has, um, shortened up that waiting period for some other applicants, so there's no action to be taken at this time.
Thank you.
Next?
Um, Putnam Nursing, um, Vera and I will cover a little bit more, um, the last time Vera's been really diligent about uh, finding out whether all the bills have been paid and how much escrow we need to finish the end of, of, uh, Putnam Nursing and do a write-off uh, write-up, saying they've addressed their condition. And, um, I think we were waiting to find out whether we had all of Jeff Battistoni's bills and then whether we had enough escrow to cover any remaining bills from all the consultants, so that's that. Um, as soon as I know, we have confirmation that it's okay to proceed, I'll do a write-up, Route fifty-two, nothing new. Um, and then Rodriguez.
Rodriguez, there's nothing new. Um, Renee, there's nothing new. Uh, Kent Development Timber Harvest, we already discussed that. Uh, the, here, our game, still haven't received a formal withdrawal letter. Uh, DeSanza, we're still hanging out, and, uh, Carrera, uh, I got an update from Phil Walters. Um, their building permit expired in December, the last time Bruce and I were out, there was a year's ago, which was quite shocking. Uh, so, so we're going to be following up on that one to find out what, what they're doing and what they plan to do and.
Thank you, Julie.
And then there was one other item, uh, Phil Walters had emailed Vera about.
Seventy-one Bowen Road.
Bowen, Bowen Road.
Seventy-one Bowen Road, are you familiar with this, Phil?
It's across the street from my house. I, I will not vote on this.
Uh, so, uh, Phil Walters had indicated that they were looking, that they're going to apply for an erosion control permit, they've disturbed well beyond five thousand square feet, they've removed numerous trees, um, there's wetlands nearby. Uh, so, uh, Phil Walters issued a stop work order, sent them to the planning board to get an erosion control permit, they have not applied yet. They're looking for permission to bring in topsoil, to topsoil about a thousand square feet, to then seed and mulch. Um, and then they'll come in for the permit application, this makes me nervous.
No.
We've never, uh, approved that, I mean, they should just be seeding and mulching whatever exposed soil is, you know, that's there and then they can come in and apply, uh, and have, hopefully have a, a solid plan to move ahead, not just sort of bits and pieces.
Ryder, I don't know how they're going to plant grass now anyway.
A little, little warm, yeah, I, I want to echo Julie's concerns, I mean, I don't believe the board has ever entertained something like this. Um, we don't know where the soil is planned to go, it could be planning to go where the wetlands are buffer, it could be planning to cover tree roots and cause additional damage. We don't have any erosion stabilization plan regarding this soil coming in, and quite frankly, you know, we have had occasions in the past where soil has been brought in and it was unfortunately contaminated, and we have no information about that soil itself either, so. Um, I, I am equally as nervous and I would just like to see the site stabilized, if it, if it cannot grow grass, then they should be instructed to develop a, uh, temporary erosion sediment control plan and temporary stabilization measures until such time as they get planning board approval for what they're looking to do.
No, I agree, uh, no, there's a lot of wetlands behind the house, so I've seen it, I know.
I'm, I'm not even sure, what were, what were they doing, were they constructing a house, what were they doing out there?
He, he, he told me a while ago that he was just leveling it out.
Ah, yes.
It looks like an entrance to eighty-four. I'm, it isn't, but that's what it looks like.
So, Phil Walters was looking for a yea or nay from the planning board, whether to allow them to bring in this, uh, additional topsoil at this time, so.
No.
Planning board members could weigh in so that we can report back to Phil Walters, um.
Uh, well, I agree with you, I don't think so.
I think, I think we need a site plan and a grading plan and an erosion control plan. Uh, because according to the material that, that I read about it, uh, they have an intent to go beyond uh, just spreading some top soil around. So we should see a plan, uh, by a design professional that shows what the existing conditions are and what the proposed conditions are and, and ultimately what the intent of development on that property is.
I'm afraid they're already at the proposed condition site, they've, they've gone a long way already.
Well, Bill put a stop work order on them.
Well, we may need to.
Yeah, so now they can, now they can do what the rules call for them to do.
It would be a nice idea.
Okay?
And they should be temporary measures.
Alright, so I'll report back to Bill, that the, the planning board is against them bringing in this additional topsoil, and they should just focus on preparing their application.
Well, I, I think Bruce was saying that we need to know whether the soil is a good idea or not. No, Bruce?
I'm sorry, Phil, the, the soil is a good idea or not, no, I, I think that basically Bill Walters is asking for the board's uh, feeling about bringing these thousand cubic, or thousand square feet of material that will be placed on a thousand square feet. And I guess Julie and I have expressed our concerns, as has, you know, Stephen as well, um, and, and Dennis said, you know, we don't, we have no idea what they're doing with it and where they're going with it, or even if the soil is clean.
Right, no, but I'm just saying that you or somebody should check the site to see whether it needs it or not.
Well, actually, what really should happen, in my opinion at least, Phil, is that, um, there should be a design professional.
Absolutely.
Design temporary erosion sediment controls, if the board authorizes, perhaps Julie could review, um, and, um, they should install them immediately. So that if there is a potentially, right, I'm thinking runoff into the wetlands, I haven't even been to the site yet, but they need to, if we can't grow grass and get grass growing, they should mulch and they should put erosion controls up to preclude anything getting, getting off that site or into the wetlands.
No, I agree. I think we're all in agreement on this.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We have to vote on this, Liz, we don't need to vote on this, right?
No, I don't think it's.
Not on the agenda.
Yeah, I don't think.
They need to submit an application, don't they? Because as a remedy.
That's for what, erosion control and wetlands?
Uh, we don't know yet.
Yeah, we don't know yet.
Okay.
But their remedy to the, their remedy is to submit an application.
Right.
So, we don't have that yet, so.
And, and I, I'm, I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure town of Kent's stop work orders do however, um, allow for, in this case, temporary stabilization of the site under the supervision of the town, so they should be instructed to do that right away.
Sounds good. Anything else on this?
That, for me.
All good.
Uh, do we have anything else on the agenda? No. Any questions, anybody?
No.
Russell, are you there?
Yeah, yeah, I'm here, I thought you did a great job under difficult circumstances here.
Are you just checking up on me, or do you have a question for us?
No, no, I, I heard we're trying to do the planning board by Zoom, I just wanted to see how it would go, it's not easy with applicants and engineers and such.
It's true, it's true, you lucky guy.
Yeah, yeah, we didn't have to suffer through that, so, uh, no, good job, everybody, good to see you again. Thank you.
Thank you, Russell.
Can't see you.
That's right.
Can I get a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Can I get a second? Can I get a second?
A second.
Stephen, how do you vote?
Would I? Have a good night.
Simon?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Jan Carlo?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The meeting is closed, thank you very much, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Bye, everybody.
Stay safe and healthy, everybody.
Bye, guys.
See you next month.
Ciao for now.
Bye.